Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Village of Gurnee Planning and Zoning Boarded for this Wednesday, August 16th, 2017. Could we have roll call, please?
Bow.
Here.
Garrity.
Here.
McFarland.
Here.
Nortoft.
Here.
Path.
Here.
Paysek.
Here.
And Sula.
Present. We have a full house. Thank you, everyone. If everyone would please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is opportunity for public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the general public to ask a question, make a comment about something that is not on the agenda this evening. Looks like none, so I will close the floor to the public on that. Next item is the approval of the minutes from our meeting that was held on July 12th. Any questions or comments on those meetings, on those minutes?
Move to approve.
Okay. Motion by Mr. McFarland and second by Mr. Bow.
Garrity.
Oh, Garrity. Sorry, guy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item is the approval of the minutes for the 19th, and there was one thing that I wasn't sure about. On page three, it says Ms. Velkover stated that there may be a continuance to be heard at the August 2nd meeting, and I couldn't remember if she told us that they had received a letter already, or they thought a letter was coming, that the petitioner was going to withdraw the request. And I...
I remember that in discussion.
Yeah.
I thought she elected to postpone until sometime in August. That was...
Well, that was...
This is the sign people?
The sign for Aspen Dental was postponed to a date certain on August 2nd.
Right, at the July 12th meeting.
At the following week. She updated, and I was not at...
And I can't remember if she's...
Oh, you know what? She did pull out because I remember the conversation between her and I. I said, "Just meet the things, and you won't have to come here. Meet the rigs," and she said...
Well, that was at the first meeting.
Was it?
Yeah.
I'm lost.
And we continued it to August 2nd. What I don't remember is when Tracy gave us the update, whether she said that they were expecting a letter or had received a letter.
No, I'm not going to contradict the minutes.
She was, I remember, and I believe what she said was that she was in anticipation of receiving a letter that they were going to withdraw.
Okay.
That's right. That is right. So, the minutes are right.
Well, it says there may be a continuance. I think it'd be more fairly stated that she said that it may be just withdrawn.
Okay.
I think would be more accurate.
Good.
Okay. So, other than that, I didn't have any other comments. Anybody else?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Garrity, second by Mr. Paysek. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right. Next item on the agenda is a minor PUD amendment for GWR Illinois Property Owner LLC care of Great Wolf Resorts, 1700 Nations Drive. Dave, can you give us?
Sure. Great Wolf Resorts Illinois is the property owner of the property at 1700 Nations Drive, the former Key Lime Cove Resort. They are in the process of doing a renovation in addition to the building. As they were developing their slide, water slide package for the project, they discovered that they were encroaching into the building setback for the tri-state tollway. The setback was defined as a 50-foot setback as part of the 1998 Nations Plan Unit Development. The underlying zoning would have only required a 25-foot setback. Therefore, they are into us requesting a minor amendment to the Plan Unit Development Agreement to allow up to a 10-foot encroachment for water slides into the required 50-foot setback.
Okay. And this is minor, so we are yea or nay. This is not a recommendation to the Village Board.
This is correct.
This is a yea or nay basis. And just to clarify, it's adjacent to the tollway, and it's this little arc that we see in the drawing that was provided to us?
Correct.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns?
Is this...
Yes, Tim.
Is this a, looks like a completely brand-new water slide that's jetting out from the building? This is, as of right now, we just have a few slides that just come out of the building. This looks like it significantly comes out towards the tollway. Am I correct in that?
The tollway is kind of running diagonally along the left side of the drawing. The green, the yellow, and the single-colored blue slides that are towards the lower-left of the drawing are existing slides. The larger diameter blue slide, and then this red and yellow slide are the new proposed slides.
This is here. Okay.
So, the dark-colored pavement that you can see kind of wrapping around is their fire access around the backside of the building. So, from the other drawings, you can see it's about 20 feet up in the air and is encroaching a little over eight-and-a-half feet into that required 50-foot setback.
But the underlying is 25, so...
Based upon the new ordinance...
So, that hasn't been a PUD.
If it had not been a PUD, we would have been only enforcing...
We wouldn't be here. And it's all tollway-facing. It's not affecting any residential views or anything like that?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nortoft.
I've prepared an advance motion.
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve the minor amendment as submitted.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Nice, Doug.
Second by Mr. Garrity. Roll call, please.
Bow.
Yes.
Garrity.
Aye.
McFarland.
Aye.
Nortoft.
Aye.
Path.
Aye.
Paysek.
Aye.
And Sula.
Aye, motion carries. Good to go on that. Thank you, Dave. All right. The next item on the agenda is an informal review requested by D.R. Horton for a project somewhere along Cemetery Road. Just to be clear for the record, the informal reviews are one of the great features of the process that we have here in town where we encourage opportunity, we encourage to give an opportunity to potential developers to kind of bounce ideas off of us and kind of, you know, get a toe in the water and, you know, see if we can give you some feedback that, you know, whether or not we like the project, things that can be done to improve the project. But it's totally, while it's a recorded meeting and it's a public meeting, but it's a non-actionable meeting, if you will, so that, you know, anything that you hear from us tonight is guidance, but it's not necessarily what our opinion may be in the future because things change. So, I mean, we'll try to give you the best kind of feedback that we can, given, you know, what you're prepared to share with us today. So, at this point in time... We have a microphone? I can't see it. I don't think there's one on the stand either, Dave.
Yeah, there is.
Is there?
There is one on the stand. You can use that one.
I can't see that far. Okay, but you found it.
You can pull out with it. Have you?
I don't see it either.
It's irrelevant, but those are walking. Because I think that's what...
Sorry.
I remember where they did this.
Sorry.
That's your fault. That's not usually where it goes.
Yeah, but he was looking for it, and it was like sitting right there. I didn't even, all I had to do was look up.
Okay. Is there something you wanted to add?
Just give a brief overview.
Okay.
The property in question, D.R. Horton is a contract purchaser at this point, looking to potentially pick up this property. We've got 23.7 acres. It is immediately south of the existing subdivision of Orchard Valley, fronts on Cemetery Road. The proposal includes a connection to the west on Carilia Street. Looking, the current proposal is for 66 homes, similar lot size to what we've seen at Wentworth, somewhat similar building size as well. We have a representative from D.R. Horton here tonight to kind of run through what they are thinking at this point, so...
Okay.
Happy to turn it over. Anyway, right up here. Yep, yep. I can either run it or...
You can run it. I'll just kind of... First off, thank you for having me here this evening. I'd like to share with you our thoughts on this property, but to your point, I'm really here more to listen to your thoughts and comments. We've bounced a half a dozen different site plans, I think, off this site, trying to find something that may work. I wanted to come in here tonight to hear your feedback and see if, what you may have to say. I want to give a little bit of background on D.R. Horton for those of you who may not be familiar with our company, and then kind of dig into the plan a little bit. If you can, yeah, there you go. Do you have a mouse, and I can just click through it? Or do you want to do it? Awesome. Thanks, Dave. I appreciate it. All right. So, a little bit of background on D.R. Horton. So, we are the nation's largest home builder. We have been for the last 15 years. We currently operate in 78 markets in 26 states. In 2016, we sold a little over 40,000 homes across the country. We're very proud of the fact that we're the largest home builder in the country. It's not easy to stay there. We're very proud of our portfolio brands that we have to offer our clients. It allows us to serve people throughout their life cycle of buying homes. Our D.R. Horton and Emerald brand serves our move-up buyers. Our Freedom Home brands, which we're building at Wentworth, serves our age-targeted buyers. And our Express brand offers a pretty fantastic platform for first-time home buyers coming into a particular market. So, in the Chicagoland area, we've been active for around 50 years through our predecessor companies. Right now, we have 24 active communities around the Chicagoland area. We sold a little over 600 homes in 2016. I'm sure it's no surprise to anybody here, but we have two communities that are actively underdeveloped locally. Vista Ridge, which is in Lake County, which is north of Gauges Lake and south of Washington Street on the west side of Hunt Club. That's a 65-lot, traditional, single-family community. Price points are between $375 and $407 for the base package for a home there. We're also selling at Wentworth, which you just referenced, and that's an age-targeted community, 73 lots. Prices there range between $328 and $370. So, the parcel in question tonight is located on Cemetery Road. I put this together to give you some perspective of where it is compared to other communities. It's actually two separate parcels. The assemblage together is about 24 acres. As was mentioned in the beginning remarks, to the north of us is Orchard Valley. To the west of us, and I believe Orchard Valley is in the county, to the west of us is Orchard Valley Estates, which is in Gurnee. And then directly almost across the street, kidney-corner from us, is the Grand Tri-State Business Park. I think that's Jump America. That is the building almost straight across the street from our property. So, this gives a little bit better perspective on the site itself. As I mentioned, it's 24 acres. It's currently improved with three single-family homes and some auxiliary buildings, a garage and a couple other buildings. The site is essentially open space right now. You can see the business park to the north and the single-family homes to the west. So, this is our concept plan, and before we kind of talk about the details of this, I wanted to at least share with you our thinking and where our heads are at. So, being in this market every day and meeting with customers and clients, we kind of have a good sense of what people are telling us when they come into our model units and what they're looking for. We feel right now in Gurnee there's an excellent opportunity for first-time home buyers to come into the market. I think last year in 2000, the last 12 months, there were 329 sales below $325,000. And the average market time for those homes were 36 days. That's pretty impressive. That means if you have a home in Gurnee, it's below $325,000. It's moving pretty fast. Right now, there's 111 homes on the market right now at that same price point, and the aging on those homes is about 61 days. And when you actually go through them, some of them have been on the market for a while, which I think kind of says something that there may be a condition with some of those homes. The thing that I guess I found surprising is only three of those 111 homes were built after the year 2000. So, most of those sales were $325,000 and below, are sort of older homes in the community. And what we find dealing with the buyers that we deal with every day, that most of our new home buyers, our first-time home buyers are looking for a new home experience. They don't, the maintenance of buying an older home, as all of us know, can be extensive, replacing roofs, basement issues. They like to walk into a new home that they know has a warranty associated with it, that's energy-efficient, that has a new hot water heater, that has all the things that they know that they can depend on at least for the next few years to be maintained. So, this site plan shows 66 single-family lots. They're small compared to a traditional lot in Gurnee. They're about 7,000 square feet, which is, I think, smaller than what you would require on your R3 zoning. The reason for that is in order to get that price point down to a level where we feel provides some affordability for a first-time home buyer, we have to amortize the development costs and the land acquisition, putting in the streets, the water, the sewer, all that's expensive. What we've tried to do here, though, is take our stormwater detention and kind of move it around the site a little bit to provide some aesthetically pleasing view planes for the lots. There's an existing wetland in the southwest corner of the site, which is going to remain. I think that's a nice open space to have on the site as well. We're planning for a park along Cemetery Road. I think most of you are probably aware there's an existing bike path on the west side of Cemetery Road. And I've, actually, I live about 10 minutes from here. I've ridden that bike path a couple of times. And any time you stop along there, if you want to take a break, you kind of feel like you're on somebody else's property. We thought having a bike path, having a park along that bike path would be a nice amenity, not only for our homeowners, but for the community as well. And we tried to move some of the detention up to the front, too, to create some visual appeal off of Cemetery Road for passersby. One of the other things that we've learned in talking with staff is immediately to the west at Orchard Valley Estates, they currently have an existing lift station for their stormwater, which I don't think I've ever seen a lift station for stormwater before, but it does exist. And we believe in engineering this site the way we're planning it. We can get rid of that lift station, which I think may be some benefit, not only to our neighbors, but hopefully to alleviate a situation that probably should never exist to begin with. So, I also included some example architecture. Now, this isn't exactly what we propose, but I wanted to give you some idea of at least where our heads were at. So, we're thinking anywhere between 2,000 square feet and 3,000 square feet for a home. Most of these homes are three to four bedrooms, two-and-a-half baths with a basement. There would be some masonry on the front. Obviously, these, as you guys know, as you move from an A elevation to a B, to a C, to a D, the sort of the aesthetics on the outside of the homes, the level of brick, the size of the porch, the trim, all sort of increases as you go along. But we want to make sure that we keep these affordable to hit that low $300,000 price point. So, this is what we're proposing. This was our plan. I'm sure in terms of a normal residential single-family lot, it probably feels dense. The lots probably feel small. But in terms to make the economics work, to be able to keep these homes as affordable as we can, this is where our thought is at right now, and I'd love to hear your feedback. So, thanks.
Okay, who would like to start?
I'll start with one comment. I've never been a fan of making the number of units higher to make the numbers work. That typically tells me that there's something wrong somewhere. Either the purchase price of the underlying property is too high, or there's just something missing. On the surface, what was it, 2.7 units per acre?
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't sound all that unreasonable to me, but when I see the size of the individual lots and how close everything's going to be, it kind of leaves me flat. So, I'm, you know, I always look for, is there some compensating, really, really swell thing to make up for the short company, and I'm not seeing it. So...
Mr. Nortoft?
Sure. Yeah, I'd like to just add on to what Jim said. You know, historically speaking, we've kind of been through this drill a few other times on a different site, and, you know, I've never been a fan of trying to, you know, trying to make the economics work for you guys. This is something that we as a community, you know, have to live with long after you guys have built it and moved on. When I saw that the lot, average lot width was, pardon me, close to like 56 feet wide, you know, I have one of those, you know, starter homes in Gurnee that was built 21 years ago. My lot's 75 feet wide, 145 feet deep, and it's 2,400 square feet, you know. So, you're proposing, you know, packing maybe as much as 3,000 or 3,100 square feet on something that is a third less of what I have. And I just can't even imagine it. To me, I mean, just the feel of trying to even drive down the street and imagine what that looks like, jammed on all that property, just isn't really appealing to me. And again, you know, when we're looking at trying to exchange, you know, square footage for, we're looking for just maybe some other amenities or exceptions that say why we can't do this, or why we should do this. What do we, what do we as a village get in exchange other than jammed parcel of land? You know what I mean? Other than the southwest corner, we know that that's not developable because of the water issues and so forth. So, we have open space technically, but I don't really see it as anything that's there as usable, I guess, by the residents that are there. So, my initial response is kind of lukewarm.
And I just want to be fair. D.R. Horton did originally come in with a traditional single-family subdivision. In talking with the mayor and a couple of board members and, you know, staff, the concept of having product out there that would compete with our existing housing stock, we were trying to do something a little bit different, trying to drive down the price point a little bit to, you know, try to obtain something that would be a little bit more affordable. So, this isn't something that they came up with on their own. We did direct them in that direction. The question is, did they go far enough, looking at price points around, you know, $300,000? So, that's something that, you know, we can further discuss, whether, you know, what affordable housing, what first-time home buyer, what workforce housing would look like. So, that's something that I wanted to throw out as well.
Excellent.
I just have a question. Is there any comparables within the village of what we see here compared to what is existing in the village?
Probably the closest thing as far as lot size is the new Wentworth development. Those are very, very similar lot sizes. The majority of those are ranch with a half upstairs.
Okay.
So, not quite the same square footage as what we're seeing here, but very compatible as far as, you know, footprint of building on lot.
So, I have a question for you. I mean, is there any, you know, based on the lot size? I mean, is there any wiggle room to, do you have any market facts that show that you absolutely have to have a 3,000-square-foot home? I mean, are you willing to adjust the home size down to maybe make it more, so it's not so jam-packed in? There's a little bit more room between?
Yeah, certainly. So, to Mr. Zigler's point, so these lots are slightly larger than the lots at Wentworth. The homes in terms of the scale, in terms of the footprint, are fairly close. Would we look at restricting ourselves to a smaller home and going all the way to 3,000 square feet? Yeah, that's definitely something that we could talk about. I think what we're going to find with most of these buyers anyways would be that they would prefer to be in a smaller square-footage home. They would like to be closer to 2,000, 2,400 versus being in a 3,000-square-foot home. At least that's been our experience around the market. Just to your point about density and development. So, you know, as a builder, we build a lot of lots around Chicago. We also buy a lot of finished lots, too. One of the unfortunate factors that weigh into a ground-up development like this is just the cost of utilities, the cost of concrete. The cost of concrete right now is incredibly expensive. So, when you start looking at streets and sidewalks and the utility configuration, it gets expensive, and that's really what drives the density. And I really appreciate what you're saying because it can often feel like in these cases, you know, something is amiss. And the reason why do you need to jam that many units? At this price point, at least in my experience in the Chicagoland area, for a ground-up development home, this is about as low as it gets. I haven't seen a new community come out of the ground fresh like this with a number like 250 on it. It's just very hard to do with the cost of improvements to do that. So, but I understand your concern and your perspective.
Dave, follow up.
Go ahead.
Well, I guess, you know, the Village of Gurnee today, you know, is different than it was in, you know, clearly 1986, or 1990, or '92, or even '96, when, you know, a lot of the housing stock was built. You know, a lot of what we've been addressing and looking at over the last several years is what we, you know, would maybe consider more infill rather than super-large-scale projects. And I'm just wondering, I mean, we're not the only community in the Chicago metro area that's faced with this same sort of, you know, maturing and evolving life cycle to its housing. And, you know, do we just have to, is it a reality of facing the fact that says, hey, you know, you're a mature community, you don't have large-scale farms you can go buy anymore to do the 500-house subdivisions and break those costs out over all these lots? You know, so is, you know, is Gurnee really not a candidate for, you know, the, you know, call it affordable entry-level housing concept that you want to try to implement here? Is this something, again, should be out in, you know, Past Elgin, or Past Aurora, or these other places like that? You know what I mean? I mean, are we just trying to do something that's not really practical anymore for our community based on where we are as a community today?
Yeah, I think, I think it's more a factor of imagination than it is just kind of, you know, as a developer throwing up one's hands and saying, "Well, I can't make it work, so let's not try," right? I think there's other avenues that we could approach if we wanted to here. This is one option. Certainly, attached units is another option to try to lower price point, but still keep unit count up to amortize those development costs. On a parcel of land like this in the village, I mean, I don't, if I came in here and said I wanted to build 150 townhomes on this site, I'm not sure how that would have been received either, right? That doesn't mean that within the village there's not a place that that could exist favorably. So, in terms of affordability on a single-family home, this is kind of what you're looking at in terms of density and where you need to be. Can you get to an affordable, single-family equivalent with a townhome, or a duplex, or some sort of other attached product in the right location? I think you can. I think you can. I think there's a number of municipalities like Gurnee that have restricted open area to develop new communities that have looked at more attached product, looked at maybe going vertical in some places to try to drive down points, price points. I would say in most cases, it's leaning towards, let's attach units, let's look at townhomes, and let's see how we can develop a site plan that functions with all the things it needs to do to make sure that we've got adequate turning radiuses for streets, for fire protection, that we have ingress and egress points, but still keep the density high enough to be able to make it work economically. So, that may be one thing the village wants to look at is, where can we put density, where can we attach things, but have it coexist with the surrounding area?
I mean, how confident are you that the target audience for new construction is first-time buyers as opposed to empty nesters? Because I've just got mixed feelings about that in terms of, I mean, there's a lot of baby boomers out there that are getting tired of the stairs and the four bedrooms, and they'll seem to be the prime targets for the millennials that are, you know, looking to start their family. And I'm concerned there's no place for the boomers to go. to start their family, and I'm, I'm concerned there's no place for the boomers to go.
Well, that, that was, that was the thought behind Wentworth, and sort of single-family living, right? So, and we agree with you. We, you know, our Freedom Home brand, our, our ranch product, our master-down product is something we build a lot of, between sort of our legacy Caroline brand, which was, you know, originally built by Cambridge Homes out in Pingery Grove, and Caroline in Naperville. We've built a lot of, you know, Caroline in, in Gray's Lake is another example. We agree with you, and that was the theory behind Wentworth. Building more of that product right now in this market, frankly, I'm not afraid of it, because I agree with you, I think there's a lot of demand in doing it. Whether the village would be inclined or not to want another empty nester, age-targeted development in the village right now with the remaining inventory that still exists at Wentworth, that's really for you guys, you know, to tell me if that, if you think that's a good idea or not. Certainly, at Vista Ridge, we have that kind of move-up buyer, that high-three, lows-four buyer. We have the, the ranches at, at Wentworth, and this is a mark, another market opportunity that we think exists here, but I would be happy to look at this as another age-targeted ranch, empty nester development, if, if the village feels that that's a, a good idea.
Jim, I would just add, I, you know, I, I do think that the age-targeting, I think that is a need, but I also think that there is a need in the market as well for affordable new homes, for first-time home buyers, and folks who aren't even first time, maybe second time, moving up. You take a look to our south, and there's a, a bunch of towns that might be unaffordable. You're talking $500,000, $600,000 for a smaller 1950s-built home in Deerfield, and even creeping into Libertyville, and think that there's families out there that are looking. So, I think this is a viable option. I, I just am concerned about, as we talked about here, cramming so many units so big in one lot size, but I, I do recognize the need, I think it's out there.
I'd like to go back to two things that I may have misheard. These are targeted to first-time buyers, I think I got that right. But I thought you said at some point that the first-time buyers prefer a 2,000 to 2,500 square-foot house. Did I mishear that?
No, you, you heard that correctly, so...
So, why are you proposing a 3,000-square-foot house for first-time buyers? I'm confused by that.
Sure, it's variety. We have to, I mean, I can't say that every first-time home buyer all wants. I mean, in our, in our experience, people are tending to go to smaller homes.
So, if you put 2,500 or 2,000 square-foot houses on this, and that would allow you to increase the lot size and have more, the footprint would be smaller for a starter, right?
Well, the, the footprint is pretty close, actually.
It is?
It is.
No help, then?
So, but, but to your point, the reason why we would go up to 3,000 square feet is variety, because not every buyer wants the same thing. But I will say, talking about trends and talking about what people are looking for, whether it's age, age-targeted or, or empty nesters, what we're finding is, most first-time home buyers are coming into markets and they're looking for smaller homes. They just don't want the maintenance of a large, single-family home that their parents may have had.
So, I'll, I'll just make one last comment. My lot is just like Dave's, it's 75 feet wide. I got a 2,500-square-foot house sitting on it, and that's, I wouldn't want to see a lot that wasn't at least that size to plunk that size house down on.
My, my, my personal residence is, I think mine's a 70-foot wide lot, and my, my house comes in at around 2,300 square feet.
I think these guys are going to be waving out of the kitchen window at each other.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't want to have, I wouldn't want to have a, I wouldn't want to have less of a spacing between houses than what I have right now. And I know I'm, I'm missing some comments from Evan.
I would just need to say that when we were looking for a home, our last home that we moved into, we were looking for something in our price range, and we were looking in Gurnee. We liked the house that we got, we liked the price that we got. The one thing that we regretted was lot size. And I knew that right off the bat, my wife didn't catch on to that for several years, but there, it's a bigger lot than these right here, and to me, I would feel, I, I just feel there's not a lot of concessions for the size of the lot here. I mean, I don't really see anything other than preserving the, the retention ponds. So, for me, again, it's just way too dense, at least for me personally.
Josh?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, it, it seems so dense, even with these private driveways in the, in the, on the right-hand side, I guess, that, that butts up against Cemetery Road, it just feels like trying to squeeze as much into this property as possible with these, these driveways that aren't real roads, so the person in those homes doesn't pull out into the street, they pull out into a driveway. It just feels too, too dense.
Brian, have you had some? We haven't heard from Brian yet, so I just wanted to...
I will just say, I concur with everyone up here. I don't think we should be asked to compromise our development and density guidelines just to make their numbers work. I mean, this does nothing for me. It's just way too dense.
One more thing.
Yes?
When you do come back with a plan, we just spent a year working on the bike path plan, and the, the requirement that we're trying to put in place now is to have those paths at least eight feet wide. The current one is probably...
10.
Is it?
10.
Oh, this is one of the areas where the new ones are in. Okay, sorry.
What was that, the bike path?
The bike path.
Oh, yeah, that's a big one.
It was a Deverby.
So, so don't blow up two feet of the bike path, okay? My error. That's all I got. Thank you, glad to have you here.
Well, thank you all for your feedback, I appreciate it.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Next meeting is scheduled for the 6th. Dave, do you know if we have anything?
I do not believe there's a public hearing advertised, but I think we do have something queued up.
Okay, okay. So, more to come on that. If there's nothing else, a motion to adjourn would be in order?
Motion to adjourn.
By Mr. Passak, second by...
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowell, if you ever say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thanks, everyone.
So, we have no more meetings this month?